Bird.
Present.
Peters.
Here.
Garcia. Trifui.
Here.
Arnshorst.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Here.
We have a call.
Wonderful, thank you. And we will start this meeting this evening as we have traditionally, starting with an opening prayer by Councilmember Bird this evening, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would ask that if you'd like to, that you'd please join us.
I'd like to pray for us today, and ask you all to join in with me. Dear Father, first of all, we thank you for a beautiful, warm day, the opportunity to come to these, to the facility today, and work on things for this city, work on things for our community. I pray that you give us wisdom, guidance, and understanding as we deliberate and make decisions. As we look at the world today, every time we turn on the news, we see a deep divide. So, Lord, I just ask that you would bring unity into these chambers, unity into our country. It says, "The United States of America." So, I just declare unity over every citizen in the United States, Lord, and that we would not sit, fight, and debate over everything, and start coming to a common ground where we can understand one another, that we would listen empathetically and understand. In Jesus' name, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is our consent agenda. These are items that are generally considered to be fairly routine. They have been included in the packet, and we will go through these, unless a member of the general public or a member of council asks an item to be removed from the consent agenda and be placed on the regular agenda, these items will all be voted on with one vote. Kathy, would you please read the consent agenda for us?
Absence excused. Councilmember Garcia, approval of minutes, June 17 regular meeting, June 24 2020 study session, oath of office, claims filed against the city, transportation services, award bid, 2020 sidewalk repair project, finance, May financial reports, finance, set public hearing to create an industrial development district at 441652 Street, July 15 2020 regular meeting, management administration services, downtown group amendment to double up food box grant for Holland Farmer's Market, management administrative services, fiscal year 2020 strategic and business plan final report.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular position on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any council members who would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? I see none there. I would note, Councilman Garcia has joined us. Good to see you, Raoul. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion to read that agenda as presented.
Any discussion?
What else?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. I'll take that second, and then we'll do the, any discussion. I was just so anxious to get to the vote on this. Kathy, could we have, please have a roll call vote?
Bird.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Trifui.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We are now to the public comment portion of our meeting. In every public meeting, we do have the opportunity for members of the public to speak to council. Please note that this is one-way communication from the public to council. We will not be answering questions or engaging in debate at this point, and this is an opportunity for you to speak on items that are not otherwise on the regular agenda. There are a couple of items on the regular agenda involving rezoning issues that I believe that there are some folks here to speak about. We will be having separate public comment periods and public hearings for each one of those, so we would ask that you limit your comments to those items when they come up on the agenda. We also limit public comment to five minutes. You'll see that there are three lights in front of me on the dais. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. If the green light is on, you're doing well in time. If the yellow light comes on, you have one minute left, and when the red light is on, your time is up, and we are very strict about that. So, with that, are there any members of the public who would like to come up and address council at this point on an item that's not otherwise on the agenda? And if so, please, when you come up, state your name and address. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Myrene Cook, and I am the Allegan County Prosecuting Attorney. This is a little weird, so I may pull this out a little bit. I hope that's okay.
That's all right.
I just wanted to address you briefly tonight and let you know a little bit about what's been going on in Allegan County since half of the city of Holland is in Allegan County. Throughout the COVID crisis, I thought it was very important, as the chief law enforcement officer of the county, to be present in the office every day, and that's something that I did. Although I allowed my staff to work from home most of the time, I was there every day, and I was there to make sure that our law enforcement and our officials were up to date on the latest executive orders, trying to give them summaries, trying to explain what was the current state of those orders. I tried to share that with boards such as yours as well, and also answer questions for all the citizens that called. I think it was a difficult time for everybody, and they were doing their best to try to figure out exactly what was going on and what they could do versus what they couldn't do. In Allegan County, we decided that we were going to look at the situations with regard to any violations. We looked at potential warnings before we were to authorize any violations of those, and I was very proud of that fact, that all of our residents did heed the warnings and we did not have to actually issue any violations. I'm very proud of the jobs that we've done in the Allegan County Prosecutor's Office. One of the things that happened over the last year was that I was elected to the Prosecuting Attorneys Association of Michigan Board. It's a statewide board. It allows counties such as ours to have a voice at the state level. I was very proud of that, though, because I was elected by the other two 82 prosecutors throughout the state, including Ron Franz here from Ottawa County, who has also endorsed me for my position. I was also elected as the chief of the Law Enforcement Council in Allegan County by the elected, or, excuse me, by the officials of all of the law enforcement agencies, and I feel respected by that because those are the people that I work with on a daily basis, including Sheriff Frank Baker, who's also endorsed me as well. We've done some really great things in the Allegan County Prosecutor's Office, and I'll just share a couple of them with you. I have been fiscally responsible for the last two years and projected for the third as well, being under budget each and every term. I think that's very important to show that we are doing what we're supposed to within our means. We've also been able to add a canine advocate to our office. Ottawa County has had one in their office for a while, but this is the first time this year we've had one in ours. His name is Joey. He's a yellow Labrador. He comes to us from Leader Dogs from the Blind and with about $40,000 worth of training. All of that came at no cost to Allegan County. I was able to get it completely grant-funded for the entire process. Joey is able to help children when they have to testify in court, and the studies and the case law shows that it helps alleviate the anxiety that they feel when they have to testify in the courtroom. So, it's been a very positive and innovative thing that our office has done. I wish I could tell you, unfortunately, that crime is down in Allegan County. It has not been. Over the last few years, we have seen a very large increase of warrant requests coming in, more than 1,000 in the last couple of years. Primarily, those cases have been in two categories. One was with regard to methamphetamine. Those cases have just about doubled in two years. We don't have the methamphetamine labs like we used to, but we have it being trafficked in because it's so relatively cheap and easily accessible at this point. Although we do everything we can with regard to diversion programs for first-time offenders and specialty treatment courts, it's very difficult. That is a very difficult addiction to break, and it could actually ruin families' lives and families'. So, what we try to do is take a very hard stance on those cases when we see them coming through, to make sure we are trying to keep our community safe from that. The other crime that we've seen a very large increase in, unfortunately, has been with regard to strangulation. Those numbers have increased dramatically. That is a relatively new law that came into existence in 2015, but we've seen it rise. In 2015, we had nine cases. Last year, I think we had 56. So, there's a lot going on. I am doing my best to make sure that we are keeping our citizens safe by doing the right thing for the right reasons and seeking justice for all those types of crimes. I'm going to speed up a little because I see my yellow light. Just so you know, a little personal information, I've been married 27 years. I'm a military wife for 21. We have four children in common, and I've worked my way up in the Allegan County Prosecutor's Office, from new assistant prosecutor to chief assistant to now to the elected official. I've been there 18 years, and with your help, I hope to continue to serve the residents of Allegan County and do my best to make sure that justice is served. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bird.
Thank you very much. And we'll have Mr. Van Beek clean the podium. Thank you. We appreciate that, providing that service to make sure that we do not spread COVID-19 any more than necessary. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to council at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Brent Brookheisen from South Shore Drive. The duty of government to uphold justice for all allows no one a privileged place. In upcoming discussions and decisions concerning expanding our civil rights ordinance, Holland's challenge is where, with great precision, we draw the line that acknowledges the justice each citizen is entitled to. Our discussions and actions must clearly demonstrate that each LGBTQ+ person is free to engage in the lawful sexual choices she or he makes. Our discussions and decisions must be equally clear concerning the civil rights of those who disagree with the lawful sexual choices made within the LGBTQ+ society. I'm not tonight entering into dialogue concerning the issues involved. That will occur later. I'm asking you councilpersons to be truly counsel, to lead our community in precise thinking and speaking. Citizens of good conscience can and often do disagree in personal viewpoints. Precise thinking is never accomplished by hasty imposition, by soundbites, or by partisan shouting. Crowd size does not measure exactness. You have been elected to example for us and to lead us in what it means to listen in order to hear each voice. Longfellow translated the words, "Though the mills of God grind slowly, yet they grind exceeding small; though with patience he stands waiting, with exactness grinds he all." Perhaps with patience, we will be able to discuss and decide with exactness. Civil rights are rooted in who we are as human beings. They are not granted by a government, but are endowed by our Creator. We treat a person as less than human when we require that person to go against her or his conscience. Counselperson must weigh the fact that conservative religious citizens and the LGBTQ+ citizens actually make parallel claims. Both believe that certain aspects of their behaviors are fundamental to human identity. Both must be free to live in lawful accordance with those beliefs. The Supreme Court decided against the position of conservative Christians regarding same-sex marriage, but the court did express concern for the rights of those who lost. The court stated, quote, "In good faith, by reasonable and sincere people here and throughout the world, certain traditional beliefs about marriage are held." Holland City is less religious and more religiously diverse than traditionally. As our culture changes, no longer is the Christian religion the agreed-upon basis of our discussions and decisions. Increasingly, the religious rights claimed by some of our citizens are colliding with the sexual rights claimed by other citizens. Careful decisions and discussion must be decided on political and legal grounds. To disregard the inherent religious nature of human beings is to treat them as less than human. Although councilpersons cannot base the upcoming decisions and discussions exclusively on religious concepts, yet you must still acknowledge those concepts as part of the discussion. In the recent Bostock decision, Justice Gorsuch said the court is, quote, "Deeply concerned with preserving the promise of the free exercise of religion enshrined in our Constitution." The right to the free exercise of religion cannot be equated with freedom of worship, as some deliberately and inaccurately express it. Religious liberty goes beyond worship. It is the freedom of each Holland citizen to live in accordance with the religious beliefs he or she chooses. In the case of the Little Sisters of the Poor, Justice Kennedy stated that religious freedom means, quote, "More than just freedom of belief. It means, too, the right to express those beliefs in the political, civic, and economic life of our larger communities." Unjust discrimination can flow in two directions. Measures speaking and intentional hearing will not necessarily
Mr. Brookheisen, your time has expired. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address council at this time? Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Anne Hunrickson, 338 Royal Park Drive, Zealand. This morning, I spent some time with a young woman of color. She was on the Hope Board of Justice Organization, then in her senior year became the president. During that last, during that year, she met a student from Nigeria who had been through trauma and had become a Christian. My young friend saw her recently at Black Lives Matter protests here in Holland. In their discussion, the Nigerian woman said she did not believe in God anymore because of the white religion. Then she confessed to my friend she was now a lesbian. She was very defensive, angry, and unsettled. Here was my friend telling me the story and was surprised how she, as a believer in Jesus Christ, responded. Over the last few months, she had been asking God for wisdom. She wanted to know how to respond to tough questions of racism, culturalism, and classism. Now she had to speak from her Christianity. It was simple. She humbly spoke that she loved her friend and knew that God had loved, God loved her too. This, she continued, "God saw the trauma that happened in Nigeria, and God is now here in Holland to show her His love. No judgment, no, just truth and wisdom. Here you are, the city council of Holland. You were elected with a prioritized promise of diversity, equity, and inclusion," which meant in your campaigning, an ordinance for LGBT protection with perhaps the same 2011 purpose. But now that you are sitting here, you are the sitting council in 2020, you have the commitment to serve the entire community. LGBT+ is 14% of the population, but significant. Not a minority status, but significant. On the other hand, 96 are of the many who call themselves Christians. Today, are you hearing with 2011 ears of your LGBT+ friends, or with the current 2020 needs of the community, including racism, culturalism, and classism? Wisdom is the key word. How will you move forward with perhaps the language of 2011 ordinance concept? This is 2020. You are elected representatives of all segments of this community, whether you agree with Christianity or LGBT. The purpose of government is to govern, for the peace and well-being for all God, all peoples' dignity. Kick to the curb your 2011 thinking that Christians are hypocritical. Can you be wise enough to realize that statement may be obsolete? Or are you approaching the ordinance with only a segment of Holland mentality? Are you purposely passing an ordinance that will advocate LGBT+ activism in order to punish another portion of your community? Are you willing, are you willingly going to pass a law that has no effective way to be policed or enforced? Ordinances have the possibility of very expensive lawsuits. I've reached out to Professor William Wagner of the Great Lakes Justice Center in Lansing, and he graciously sent me the following language for you to consider in this ordinance, if you desire. My question is, is it really necessary? Is an ordinance necessary? Does it include the needed scope much larger than LGBT+? And here is the language. Government shall not substantially burden a person's exercise of religion, even if the burden results from a rule of general applicability, except as provided in the subsection B, subsection B. Exception, government may substantially burden a person's exercise of religion, only if it demonstrates the application of the burden to the person, one, in the furtherance of the compelling government interest and is the least restrictive means of furthering the compelling government interest. A person whose religion exercised has been burdened in violation section may assert that violation as a claim in defense in a judicial proceeding and may obtain appropriate relief against the government, which is a lawsuit. I have that language to give to you.
Thank you. Thanks, Anne.
And sorry, Anne, for missing in between speakers.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Ah, Bashby, 967 Songbird Lane. Our nation is in an uproar. She's being attacked from within on multiple fronts. She's having to endure upheavals, the likes of which just a few months ago would not have been imaginable. And now, in the midst of all that, and after a complete redefinition of sex by the Supreme Court, here we are again in Holland, being dragged into another debate on gay rights that is both meaningless and unnecessary. Because of the possible timeline, as I understand it, I have also submitted some additional written comments concerning Holland's supposed need to be progressive for gay rights. Over the last several weeks, it's become apparent to me that public perceptions, and my perceptions as well, of various current causes are no longer about the original issues. I say this because in the very, every one of those issues, including the gay rights narrative, data and facts have become increasingly devalued, if not completely ignored. We are being asked to actually change public policy to the point of impacting the civil liberties of all citizens. On the basis of mostly unverified anecdotal experiences, we're being asked to change the very culture of Holland on the basis of emotional appeals and slogans without evidence. Since last December, myself and others have presented facts and data to the council over and over again. We have demonstrated that, given the religious nature of our area, the claims of liberal theologians and pastors in this area have abused scripture and misrepresented God's claims. We have demonstrated that both on the national level and the local level, the idea of any kind of mass or systemic discrimination has no basis in reality. We have shown that any claims of public harm toward the gay community are simply mirages. The claims of unfairness as well, in terms of civil rights, cannot be understood as a problem for our community unless unfairness is defined as the exercise of one's conscience to an issue in ways that offends a minority of Hollanders. The gay rights movement began with a simple demand. The government was to stay out of their bedrooms. Going by the courts instead of the people, they got that in the Supreme Court decision, Lawrence. The next claim was that they wanted legal right of same-sex marriage. Along the way, our leaders codified hate crime statutes, the ability of the government to prosecute persons for their motives rather than the crimes they actually commit. For a second time, in Obergefell, by circumventing the people, the court gave them their wish. And immediately on the heels of that win, the new standard was a redefinition of sex, according to the 1964 Civil Rights Act. With such a victory, they knew that they would be able to impose their moral and cultural standards on every remaining area of American life. Bostock has now given, opened the floodgates for that. As evidenced by the presence tonight of myself and others, this has long since ceased to be about sexual lifestyles or gay rights. We are facing, what we're facing is something much more basic. It is about the imposition of control and authority over those few remaining areas of American liberty that this progression has not yet completely overrun. It is about, as Justice Alito wrote in his dissent, "The power to threaten freedom of religion, freedom of speech, and personal privacy and safety." Simply put, it is about victories in securing an ever-growing list of unsatisfied demands. There is simply legally and culturally nothing left for this council to do on this issue. The question then is whether or not this council and this city has the courage to stand against the cultural, and if not political, revolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Welcome. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Jen Greenlee. I live in North Holland. I want to commend all of you for doing such an awesome job in being social-conditioned. You've done a nice job separating the chairs, so we're six feet apart and then some, but you don't need masks and the social distancing at the same time. It is a guideline. It's not a law. I'm not going to hinder my, my health by wearing a mask and breathing back in the CO2 I'm supposed to expel. Within 20 minutes, any one of you can drop your oxygen levels 12 to 20%. That's not healthy. And when somebody's asymptomatic, others are not going to be contagious because of that. But nobody here is sick, so we should be fine. Our immune systems are strong, God-given. So, I am here also to support what Bob has just said. This is not just about LGBT, or for that matter, VLM, or virus, or whatever. It is about the social conditioning. It is about losing our freedoms. It is about our country going down. If America goes down, so does 170 other countries. China goes up. From July 20th, oh, I'm going to read you first. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech," which we're all demonstrating right now, "or of the press, or of the right of the people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances," amendment one on which we're standing on. From July 2012 to June 4, 2018, Jack Phillips, Masterpiece Cake Shop owner in Lakewood, Colorado, was involved in a lawsuit, not wanting to violate his religious beliefs and make a cake for a gay couple. Now, it doesn't matter to me what the gay couple wants to do in their own privacy of their own home, but when it does cause encroaching on what somebody else's rights are or beliefs, I think we need to be considerate of that. So, case was filed, and it took six years for the Supreme Court to end up with a ruling of 72 in favor of Jack's First Amendment rights. Does Holland want six years to deal with cases? Do we want to create that sort of scenario when Holland doesn't need that? We can come up with a policy that would be a win-win. I'm in favor of win-win. I don't want to be discriminated against as I wouldn't want anybody else, because my identity is in Christ, and anybody that's a follower of Christ has that as a stronger identity over any labels, whether it be LGBT, brown, purple, black, or white. Holland can do better. We can have a policy. We do not have to go the way of an ordinance that could create lawsuits that would take even longer than six years. A question I have also for you is, how can one be sure somebody is discriminated in some cases? For example, I had, believe it or not, a couple of black people that lived with us, and time and time again, they were being fired from their employment place. They weren't being discriminated. They weren't being discriminated against, but I know, I saw tardiness was a habitual thing, going to work late all the time. Does that mean he was being discriminated against? No. It showed he didn't have the work skills, the habits, to be able to hold on to a job. I don't know. But people have to be understanding that if there is a discrimination, you need to end up proving it, and there needs to be a way to do that, and it can't necessarily be between, let's say, the renter and the manager of the apartment. It needs to be through some other avenue. Maybe it's a counseling process through the help of churches. Churches have helped with a lot of cases. They've come alongside with refugees. Why can't they come alongside government and help out, and have extra counsel that is neutral and separate from the parties involved? One church does restorative circles. You could incorporate something like that. A policy could be written up as a protocol to follow, and I just want to encourage you that we can do that. We do not have to have an ordinance that would take years and years of law cases, tie up city money, tie up state money, tie up the people's...
Thank you, Ms. Greenlee. Your time has expired.
Thanks, yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Very happy to state that I live at 344 West 35th Street in the Alleghen County portion of the city of Holland. I just wanted to give you an update. I haven't been with you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council for several months, on what's happening in your county government. This November 3 election, we will have for all voters in Alleghen County the opportunity to help us restore our millage limitation that was first adopted by Alleghen County voters in 1965. It's known as a Headley reset. In 1965, the voters established that we would have a 5.7 mil limitation, and for the county government, 1.4 mils for our general law townships, and .14 mils for the AESA, the intermediate school district that serves much of our county. The effect of various Headley rollbacks over that intervening period amplified by Proposal A is that our millage right now is at a ceiling of 4.6 mils, and it makes it increasingly difficult for us to make the decisions about balancing the budget and comparing that with requests for new services. So, I want to be very clear, that voters will be asked to set the limitation and not levy the millage itself at 5.7 mils. We are also in the process of ordering and installing equipment for the live streaming of our Board of Commissioner meetings. A longstanding tradition has been that the Board of Commissioners meets in the afternoon, although we do have two night meetings a year, and I see this as an opportunity to expand the very good goals of the Open Meetings Act, and so that people can participate in our meetings through the live streaming mechanism, or watch us later if they are having trouble But seriously, we have been conducting our meetings since the COVID made its appearance in our country through Zoom since March 26. Our two meetings this month will continue to be by Zoom, and of course, that permission expires from the governor on July 30th, so we don't know how long we'll be able to do that, but we want to make sure we're doing things in a safe manner. One of the unaddressed emergencies, if you will, that we continue every now and then to hammer on a little bit, is the impact of shoreline erosion on our public structures in Alleghen County. We have one glaring example of a road that has been reduced to a pretty unsafe condition, Lake Shore Drive in South Sawtucket Township. And when I say unsafe condition, for the response of public safety agencies to about 10 homes that are north of it, and petitioning the state government to help us, to help our road commission restore that road, so far unsuccessfully, but we probably won't give up. Finally, we are in the process of taking bids, or just published bids, for building a new entrance to our county courthouse. That process has been in the works for several years, and now we have the opportunity to, in the design that we have out for bids, to reflect the need for more security and more social distancing, if you will, and those kind of needs that help us continue to have open government and access to county services, but still do it in a safe manner. Looking forward on the horizon, I think those of us in local government know that the governor legislature just came to agreement on whether there will be significant budget cuts, including revenue sharing, which we'll all share in that decision-making. And then also, there are people in our county who would like us to authorize the use of ORVs or ATVs on county roads, and that debate, I think, is kind of heating up a little bit. It may not be totally of interest to those in urbanized areas, but it is to many of our citizens. So with that, I thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. Good to see you all again. And at your direction, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Story? Wonderful. Thank you, Jim. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Mae Klein Haxel. I live in... On Hayawaka. I was... I lived in Denver, and with the civil rights ordinance that you guys are considering, we had a change while we were there. There was a HR manager that I was friends with, and she said that it was a complete nightmare in that they had to install an additional bathroom in their facility, so I'm just wondering what the responsibility of businesses are to accommodate whatever list of needs people need for feeling uncomfortable. And then I'm also wondering what the responsibility of Holland is to accommodate the needs of what people need to feel comfortable. But at some point, like, there was additional needs asked, additional needs asked, like, where do you draw the line in what is accommodating and what is just demanding attention and more control? And that was what the HR manager shared privately with me. I also have two little boys. As a business, if I put them in a daycare and someone decides to change their gender, it's going to be hard for me to continue with that daycare. Now, the daycare, if you're looking at employment, civil liberties, like, the daycare wouldn't be allowed to let them go, but I'm going to be allowed to take my child out of the daycare, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the general public comment period and move on to item number 10, adoption of ordinances. Item 10A, Planning Commission, proposed rezoning of 1321 M40 and 1301 Waverly Avenue from PUD District to the I-1 District. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, Jenna Elzwick, our senior planner, is ready to go and has a PowerPoint to help describe this project and proposed and recommended rezoning.
Thank you. Good evening. So here we have 1321 M40 and 1301 Waverly. And you can see that the property, this is for rezoning, the property that we're speaking of in terms of context is down in the South Point Center, where you have M40 here and Waverly around this end. Currently, the residence in is located just north of these parcels, and these are the parcels that are for purchase by the applicant, which is Tommy's Quality Car Wash, for their corporate office and a small car wash, which I'll show you in one moment. It should be noted that G here, parcel G, is not part of the existing approved site plan and would come in at a later time. And you can note also that down here on this corner is an existing small strip mall. So, as we do whenever we have a rezoning request, we compare the existing zoning to what our future land use map calls for, which is part of the master plan, in this case, the 2017 master plan. So you can see here that the existing zoning is PUD. That was done back in the late 1990s, when there was a concept plan that was drawn up, and then it just never materialized. And so, at this point, and back in 2017, you can see that the thought was to really put that mainly into industrial, but then have that highway commercial on the corridors. And so, the requested rezoning change is to I-1 Industrial, and I-1 actually allows for, that zoning district allows for, the mix of commercial and industrial, so that would be the most appropriate. And really, over the last 20-some years, the city has only heard of interest in terms of industrial and commercial for the site and for the southern location of the city, but nobody's kind of, you know, been all that interested enough to develop so. So it has actually remained completely vacant since then. So the approved site plan has a large 223,000-square-foot corporate office building and warehouse, as well as... So this is the offices, warehouse area, outdoor storage, and then parking. Actually, these are pretty excited about this one, but potentially most likely going to be solar panel carports. They also have some deferred parking. They have landscaping around the entire site, as well as, as I mentioned, that small car wash in the corner here. This gives you perspective in terms of a rendering, though it is slightly outdated because this area will be deferred, open space, unless they deem that additional parking is needed. And then just some elevations for your viewing. That's that small car wash, and then the car wash elevations. And the applicant is here if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. At this point, I will open it up for the open, the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak in regard to this rezoning? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing in regard to this rezoning. Counsel, any questions for staff at this point? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Will we approve the request to rezone?
Moved by Hookstra, and I'll ask for support this time. Support by Garcia. Any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithuie?
Yes.
Arasour?
Yes.
Corbin? Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next is item 10B, also from the Planning Commission, proposed rezoning of 285 West 36th Street and portions of 904, 906, and 926 South Washington Avenue from the R1 Family Residential District to the PRD Planned Residential Development District. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, counsel. Again, Jenna Elzwick is here, and we'll go through an introduction. This is a project that has been multiple steps to get it to this point, so I think there's a lot of background information that mayor and counsel are aware of, but certainly a requested and a staff-recommended rezoning of these parcels on West 36th Street. Thank you.
So again, as we do with all rezoning requests, we look at the existing zoning map and then what the future land use map calls for. So in this case, 285 West 36th Street and those three properties, portions of those, is zoned R1, one-family residential, and the request is for PRD. So we look at our 2017 master plan, the future land use map, and here it was deemed as suburban residential. Suburban residential allows for any type of single-family residential, any type of, so not only detached, which is what is limited in R1, but townhouses that are single-family. And so for this project being proposed, that there are townhomes and single-family detached homes, the PRD rezoning would be needed for the approved site plan to go forward. As a very quick reminder, an RFP was sent out, request for proposals on the Phase 1 portion of the site, which is the city-owned property. Specifically, you can see just some of the elements that were called out for, and which the applicants have met in their proposal. The approved site plan, again, it calls for two phases. The first phase would be the northern portion, which is the city-owned property, 19 single-family units, nine detached, and then 10 townhouses. Phase 2, the southern area, 23 single-family units, nine detached, and 14 townhouses. Due to the number of the homes, a fire access drive is required, which is being provided into the second phase and would be there before that second phase is built. In addition, and this were elements of our RFP, they are proposing, or they have been approved, the site plan's been approved, to show a 35-foot buffer along the west portion, comprised of existing trees, and a 30-foot existing tree buffer, and then additional landscaping where necessary, along the northern border. It'll be a combination, it would be a combination of modular townhomes. Parking would be provided both in the single-family homes, attached garages, detached garages, as well as street parking. New trees are proposed along the road, the private road, as well as these courtyards, which everyone would face for community gathering space, like in a pocket neighborhood. Some renderings, again, are, these are the single-family homes, which would be constructed by Habitat, and the townhomes, which would be constructed by Jubilee. And this is just a map that shows dimensions in case anyone's interested. And the applicants are here to also answer any additional questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I will now open the public hearing in regard to this rezoning. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak at the public hearing in regard to the zoning of these parcels? And again, we would ask that you please state your name and address for the record.
Mike Horison, 265 West 360. I'm as sick of coming here as you guys are seeing me. There's just so many things with this, yeah, townhouse deal. I come from South Side of Chicago, where it was... I lived in townhouses until I... I come from South Side of Chicago where it was, I lived in townhouses until I was twenty years old. There was no space in between. You shared a porch with people, your neighbors. You either really, really like your neighbors, or it's not very pleasant, I can tell you that. The parking, they've three-point something parking spaces per unit. I'll tell you what, it sounds like a lot, but nine of those, you'd have to have two cars in the garage and two cars in the driveway to count that as four parking spaces. Not very many people are gonna park like that constantly. You still got a back car out of the driveway? Where do you put that to get the one out of the garage to pull it back in? It's, it doesn't work. It sounds good, it worked, it sounds good on paper. It truly doesn't work. They got parking around the perimeter. I know what parking's like in a neighborhood like that. Yeah, it's public parking, but it's in front of my house. I'm gonna, you can't park there. I guarantee you it's gonna happen. You know, it's just, it's human nature, sad to say. I always parked there. You can't park there. It'll happen, guaranteed. The 36th Street thing, that's a joke. Somebody said, somebody said last week that, yeah, well, we ain't gonna improve it until after everything's done. Well, I don't think anybody asked for the improvements to be done before anything is built, but I think somebody would like to see what you're planning. Last week, they mentioned sidewalks like three or four times. I don't think anybody on 36th Street cares about a sidewalk. I, you know, I don't care. The sidewalk isn't gonna get me to where I wanna go. I'm driving. If I can't get out of the driveway, it doesn't make much difference. Somebody mentioned twenty-four foot wide. It's twenty-four foot wide at the corner of Washington. In front of my house, the pavement's twenty feet wide. When I backed out of my driveway just now, the guy crossed the street, he was parked off of the road. He was not on the pavement, parked in front of his house. And really, not a problem, what can I say? But I got a little pickup truck, it's the little S10 pickup, not a huge giant thing. You know, and back up, and I almost have to hit him in order to make just back up and out without going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I know one of the neighbors had mentioned, gee, I hit the neighbor's car across the street 'cause he was parked on the street, and I couldn't quite swing it around. And I thought I had climbed, but I hit it. You know, it's only twenty foot wide, people. Sounds like a lot, but it's not. There's just so many things about this. You guys are giving Mr. Darby a construction road for his property, 'cause he won't use his, he won't use his access. There's a house back there, and there's access to his. And somebody said, oh, that, well, it's not legal to use that to go through his parking lot. Well, there's a house back there right now, and there's a driveway that goes to that house. So is that legal? Not legal now? You know, there's just so many things wrong with this. The statistics, you say, oh, the numbers for the cars, the traffic, it'll be fine. Well, yeah, ninety percent of the time, but that ten percent of the time, you have a heck of a time getting onto Washington Avenue. People keep saying, man.
Thank you, Mike. And we do like having you here, and you're welcome any, anytime. Anyone else would like to speak in regard to the rezoning of these parcels?
Gotta do it one more time.
All right. And I'm gonna have to ask you one more time. Please state your name and address for the record.
You can't remember? Sally Joltersma, Pioneer Village. I live at 833 Millbridge, right where the sewer line goes from the empty woods down to 33rd Street. That's where the sewer goes. I'm not computer-suave with what the city does when it comes to how do you report things? But at the last meeting, we were talking about having a creative entrance. I think Jay Peters brought that up, according to my notes. How do we find out answers to what did you come up with? What suggestions do you have? We talked about the number of people, the number of entrances. I sent you an email that informed you of the elderly community that Pioneer Village is, where we have two entrances versus one. We don't, we don't have that much traffic because our people are older. Well, you're gonna get a bunch of younger people in this development, and I'm all for that. But you gotta figure out what you're going to do with the traffic. References made to Harbor Village, let me back up. Cobblestone on thirty, out on Graskip Road? Yeah, they get out on Graskip Road, not Washington. Another one was a reference to the one east of town, Noelwood. They too, they get out into a country road, not Washington Avenue where there's traffic. Janice Bosch sent you an email. I forwarded it to everybody. I thought that was a pretty good email on how she says, you know, take a ride and check out the road area. Go down Washington, go down 40th and see where the road is blocked off. Hey, I don't live on 36th Street, so if the road gets blocked by construction traffic, it doesn't, it's not my concern, I don't live there. But I feel the City Council and the Planning Commission needs to take that into consideration big time. I mean, we've been talking about this now for, what, two years, since 2017? Anyway, I do think the Habitat has a good program. I don't have anything against that. I just don't like how the answers, I don't know how to get the answers as to what are you gonna do about the entrances? What are you gonna do about the sewer and water problems? Where do I go look up this information? Who do I have to talk to? So anyway, I'm just putting two cents in. It's the last time I'm gonna do it. Good luck, you guys. You got a big decision to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
And I'm gonna do two things when I'm up here, Mr. Mayor. I forgot, I apologize. During the public comments section, there were the email public comments that were received. So you may want to reference those now and maybe at a later point in the agenda, circle back and receive and file those as we have in the past several months.
I appreciate that, yes, thank you.
Sorry for forgetting.
No, and that's also my fault. So, so thank you, and I'm gonna rely on Mr. Trithuie to help remind me of that as well. And I believe that all of those public comments that we did receive through the email were related to this particular issue. As I'm looking down the list, I think, I believe that they were. I believe that they were, so it's.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, so I think it's appropriate that we accept them as part of this process as well. So let's take the in-person ones first, and then we'll deal with those, with those that came through the public comment email address. Anyone else who would like to speak in regard to this particular rezoning? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And I would entertain a motion from Counsel to accept into the record the public comments that we received through email. We received one from R.A. Johnson of 36th Street, Ryan Kilpatrick of Housing Next, Sally Joltersma, 36th Street, Rose Marie Stevenson, 36th Street, Janice Bosch, 36th Street, Patty Jones, 36th Street, and Ruth Van Ark, 36th Street. I don't believe they all live at those addresses, but those were in the reference to that particular topic matter. Moved by Trithuie, is there support? Support by Byrd. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. At this point, are there any questions, comments from Counsel before we move on to a motion? Yes, Mr. Trithuie?
Before we get to the, before we get to the motion, I was hoping to do this before she sat down. Jenna, could you find your way back, please?
Yes.
I'm advancing in age, you're gonna have to help me with a history lesson here. The Phase 1 that is presented now, how substantially different was that from the original 285, 285, West 36th? It's pretty much the same, correct? Same number of units, same layout, same this, same that?
Correct, as, which was discussed, yes.
So they just basically kinda did a, yeah, roughly a mirror image.
Pretty much. I mean, again, that wasn't what was submitted in terms of site plan, but it was, you know, it was a preliminary concept discussion, but they were landing at about nineteen homes.
That's, that's what I remembered. I was corrected last week, but again, I'm advancing in age, so I just wanted to have that confirmed. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Why don't you hang around up there, Jenna? Because I'm guessing there's gonna be some more questions or comments for you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Counsel for staff?
Yes, I, and I don't know if this is the place or if we, is it during our discussion? The Phase 1 is completed, and then the Phase 2 starts?
Yes.
And what if something happens to the economy? Or let's say a virus comes along and changes everything, and there's no, no one comes to buy these or fill in the market, whatever, doesn't fill in these newly-built places? What happens? Does that affect Phase 2?
I mean, a lot of it would be, you know, what the applicants would do in terms of their program. However, in terms of zoning, it would still be zoned as the PRD, yes. Okay.
All right, any other questions, comments for staff? I have a couple in regard to process. I don't think I've been involved for the entire two and a half years of this process, but I do recall being here over a year ago to a number of different meetings. I just wanna make sure that we've done this right in terms of noticing. We had an RFP process, I believe there was noticing that was required for that. Did we, did we do the required noticing for that to notify neighbors, notify who we needed to notify in regard to the RFP process?
Yes.
Okay. This also then went to Planning Commission, correct?
Correct.
And Planning Commission meetings, open meetings, public meetings, and all notice to the appropriate parties as well?
Yes.
And then this process as well, when we're looking at the zoning change? 'Cause I've heard some and read some comments from folks that said that they didn't know that things were going on. I just wanna make sure that we've done this and crossed our Ts and dotted our Is. So we have done that?
We have.
Okay. And then the other was in regard, some of the other questions and comments that we've been receiving in regard to traffic counts and the number that are there. And it came to mind to me this afternoon, as, I hope my wife's not watching, I was going through the Taco Bell drive-thru, 'cause I wanted to try to get onto Washington Avenue as many times as I could in the last week. So that's my excuse for going into Taco Bell. And I realized that I was pulling out onto Washington Avenue from a very busy drive-thru, and there are lots of restaurants along there, and other streets that come out onto South Washington Avenue. And we've done some comparisons to other developments in the area. How do the other, do we know the other street traffic counts that there are? I see you have a piece of paper in your hand, so I'm guessing you were prepped for this.
I do. These are actually directly from our city engineer, Brian White. He says that we do not have a record of, record of counts taken on 36th Street because there's so little traffic. So the study, the traffic study indicates a calculated value of 382 trips under existing conditions with no development. The medical and dental offices accounting for 241 of the 382. This seems conservative and really is probably lower. Development is predicted to add another 356 for a total of 738. When they looked at the last three years, oh, he looked at crashes. So actually, this does not have the counts on the, oh, I'm sorry. September 2018 count on 33rd Street was 1,263 daily trips. And May 2019 count on 35th Street was 1,735 average daily trips, ADT. So then he was talking a little bit about crash data. I know that wasn't your question per se, but that he didn't see anything over the last three years, but that the company that did the traffic report found two crashes over a five-year period.
At that intersection?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. And we did, the traffic study was done in regard to that road, even though they had to estimate because they're trying to do traffic counts based on the development that's not there yet. And we've talked about the idea of putting a crosswalk there or putting a light there. Before we do those things, there's, we're required to get a traffic warrant, right? Which was a term that was completely foreign to me before I stepped up here. It's, I like to think of it in regard as, is that light warranted? Do we need it, right? And what did that, did the traffic study say we needed any of those things?
No, it came back as recommending against any of those things.
Okay, all right. Thank you, and I apologize again for me getting into my lawyer tone, but that's what I'm used to when I'm on a microphone like this, so I apologize.
No problem.
Any other questions, comments that Counsel has for staff?
Yeah, maybe one more question.
Sure.
Which that question makes me think of. And as I thought about traffic also and deciphered the traffic study, it's almost, it's not a question, although it's more traffic for the residents on 36th Street, what's going to, you know, Washington is the problem. And what is going to happen in the future with Washington? I think it, I personally think it's difficult to get onto Washington. You know, I have a doctor's office down on Washington, and it's always been a kind of a putz, but it's also difficult sometimes to get out of the gas station across the street, too. It's just, that's Washington Avenue. What is the city's plan for Washington? I mean, Washington's the problem. It's not getting out of Cobblestone on the Graskip, but it is a problem getting out of almost anywhere on Washington, including this 36th Street, because Washington's just a fast road. You get down toward downtown, Michigan to River, and it's closed in, and it's naturally, you have traffic commerce just because it's narrower. But Washington's a highway. What are, would the city have any plans for that?
I will turn that over to our city manager.
City manager?
Yes. So I had this and other conversations with Brian White, Transportation Services Director. Janice shared very accurate information, the same conversation I had with Brian about traffic studies. Asked your question, I asked him the same thing. And no, while there's master planning, kinda talk about different things and maybe looking, and we've had some discussions, I remember sub-area groups talking about Washington Avenue. As it relates to the road, there have not been any discussions or policy direction on changing the reconfiguration or anything of Washington Avenue. And if we would do that, we'd wanna do that as a complete component of the entire road, not as it relates to an individual development. Would be Brian's recommendation, and I would agree with that. But there is no plan or anything adopted by Counsel or anything else as to, as to it relates to Washington Avenue.
Any other questions, comments for Counsel? Or, excuse me, for staff, from Counsel? What is the pleasure of Counsel, then? Do we have a motion? Yes, Mr. Hookstra?
Move, we adopt the recommendation?
Moved by Hookstra to adopt. Is there support?
Support.
Was that Lynn, Lynn Raymond? Any discussion?
Yes. You go.
Ladies first.
No, no, I've already talked, please, I insist.
I'm not gonna argue with you. As they say, rank has its privileges. All right. Seems this is déjà vu. Seems this is deja vu all over again. We've had this discussion many times, different ways, shapes, forms. I had finally gotten settled with the agreement and the layout of the Phase One original. Didn't like it a whole lot, but I thought it was workable. I think the, and maybe not all the neighbors on Thirty-sixth Street were embracing it. But I, I think they were, and Mike, if I'm speaking wrong, you can tell me later, I think they were getting used to the concept. This whole project, and, and it's going to come up later, I know it's going to come up later, but affordable housing is one of the top priorities for the, this council. We've said it for a number of years, we put it as a goal. This is where I get conflicted, because the impact as these projects and every one of them is just a little bit different. But we have to, as a council here, we're representing the whole city. We're not representing Washington Avenue, West Thirty-sixth Street. We're not representing so on and so forth at this specific time. We're looking at the, we're talking about this, but we're also looking at the vision for the whole city. The vision for the whole city is to get some affordable housing in here. Our responsibility with the health, safety, and welfare is make sure it does not have a negative impact on the surrounding area. That's where I'm having the problem. I have a problem, I'm, I'm sorry. I have a little disagreement with the traffic study. I've read this thing three times, and I can't get past the first sentence on page four, two point one. Washington Avenue runs north and south direction west of the site. I'm sorry, if they don't even know what side of the, the, that's the east side. That's, you know, north, east, I'm sorry, I'm making a big joke out of this, but my credibility goes out the door when I can't even get past that. I don't, I, I really dislike challenging engineers. I've worked with engineers for an awful long time. They're very, very intelligent people. They have their own language. Sometimes they talk layman, sometimes they don't. I just, I, I started out looking at some of the comparisons, and then it, it shout over here and shout over there, and I got, I can't get past that, what I just read. The numbers simply do not add up to me. They simply do not. Last week, we had some thrown out there, well, what about just down the road Meadow? Well, Meadow's got a wider road. It also has an apron to get in there. I heard about Cobblestone. Cobblestone, if, if you're comparing Grascope to Washington, you don't live in this town. There's a number, there's a number of other things that just don't add up. And my heart is, is sitting with the, we've got to have affordable housing. That's where my heart is. My gut's saying something's wrong here. And I'm going to tell you right now, I will not be able to support this rezoning as it stands. I asked a couple of questions last week. If this was reduced someplace in between what the original plan was and what's done now, offering a little bit less impact, searching for a second way to get out of there, I, I have absolutely no sympathy for a situation where somebody gets landlocked like this because of the way they built things out. That's not Jubilee's problem. I mean, that, that, they didn't cause this. They're unfortunately having to deal with it. But we get a lot of situations like this that now we've got to try to figure it out. We're putting an awful big impact on ten homes that were just minding their own business. We saw an opportunity to get some low-income housing in here. We had a, I, I thought we had a decent plan. We didn't, not everybody agreed. After all my years on here, you're not, you're never going to get everybody to agree. If you do, something's wrong someplace. So, and I'm, yeah, I, I simply cannot support the rezoning as this is stated. We went to what our criteria that we could talk about last week. My criteria, and it has nothing to do with the site plan, we can't do anything with that. That's, that's not our jurisdiction. My issues are the impact on Thirty-sixth Street and the ten neighbors there, the amount of traffic, and possibly the density. I didn't talk about that, I'm not going to. If this was scaled back and brought back to us, I'd probably have a change of heart. But as it stands right now, personally, I cannot support this rezoning. And I know that goes against the, people are going to come in, well, Holland doesn't, the council doesn't want, no, that's not it. That is not it at all. I have been a proponent for affordable housing, but I'm not going to wreck another neighborhood. That's not what this is all about. As Quincy prayed earlier, we have to get together. We have to be of one mind. And sometimes you've got to go with your gut. And my gut's telling me there's something wrong here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Nikki?
Okay, I'm glad Mike went first. I wrote mine down, so if there's some redundancy, I apologize. I also found this very tough. It's a struggle. It is my ward, but that's not why. It is, my first one is, our vision is affordable housing, and that's what we're here. That's one of the things we are proponents of in this city. I like the entities, Jubilee and Habitat. I visited the homes. I like the way they do things, and they continue with the new owners once they're in their new home. I like the idea, not everybody does, of PUDs or PRDs, because you have some control over the development, as opposed to just, you know, ten people building their homes or twenty people building single-family homes. But, the but part, that is the struggle and that bothers me, is the traffic. And I, and I, as I said, I, I think it's more Washington. It's not so much Thirty-sixth Street. All those, those neighbors are going to be, have a huge impact on that. I think they need more than one street. They need an ingress and an egress. They need, that development needs two places to get in and out. It's, it's, to me, that's a safety issue. You find that out at McAtala. There's one way in, one way out, and if something blocks that road, if there's another emergency or a medical emergency, that's it. I mean, that's a, that's a definitely a safety issue. I, and I think, I'm wondering if it is possible to go down in numbers, and again, as you said, that's not ours. This is, the Planning Commission has already approved this site plan, so that could make a difference at some point. The other, the last thing is, I went to the groundbreaking of the Girling's development yesterday out on, in your ward, out on M forty, Kensington. And there is, to me, that's a more appropriate kind of place. It's, it is wide open, it's got room for this, it has various price points that are affordable, and it just, instead of having this huge impact on an already existing neighborhood, and it's, it's the same thing that you're saying, Mike, it's just, I'm, I'm, I can't, the way it is now, put a yes on this vote. And that's what I have to say. And thinking regionally, there are other, does it have to be all in Holland? There are other places that this is happening, and even Jubilee and Habitat are doing little spots here and there throughout the city, so, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Nikki. Other comments from council? Other discussion? Yeah, Roel.
So I, I didn't necessarily have a question for staff, which is why I didn't ask it then. It might be more for the developers, but just curious, again, what the, the timeframe for the phasing is, kind of the two phases?
Yeah, I'd be glad to answer that. Our, our initial timeframe is hoping to break ground in the spring of 2021, and we would build out Phase One, although depending on costs and everything, and, and also fundraising for us, we may go ahead and put all the infrastructure in for Phase Two. Once Phase One is built out, we would start on Phase Two, which would probably be 2022 into 2023.
Okay. Any follow-up on that, Roel?
Yeah. I mean, I, I appreciate, I think, you know, the comments that have already been shared. Cause that's, I think that's, that's the Russell right now. And I do, I do believe that, that all of us sitting here have a desire to see affordable housing. I think that the piece that still continues to sway me, I, I think in the, in the direction that I'm leaning ultimately is, there aren't a lot of opportunities for us as a city to do something about it with, I mean, we can, we can incentivize some things, but this is, this is a real property that we own, right? And which is part of the reason that we, you know, main reason that this, this all transpired. I mean, it, it initiated because this was an opportunity that the city had. If not this, then what? Right? And that's not to negate or to look past all these other challenges, because I do think that the traffic potential is a significant one. It is going to drastically change that area. When I think about affordability context, the, kind of the, the potential clientele, you know, I think one of the things that makes this kind of area attractive, more so than other more developable areas that might have less impact on an existing neighborhood, is, is the fact that it is in a, within an existing neighborhood. It's the fact that it is within walking distance of a lot of places, you know, that can ultimately, ultimately be resources, you know, for those who would call this home. Like the, the area has everything to do with why it's such a, a great potential for a development like this. I think I know where I'm leaning. I'm not sure where we're, we're going to shake out, but, you know, I'm, I'm interested in having discussions on, on what we can do with Thirty-sixth Street in the future if this was to go through.
Thank you, Roel. Other comments from council? Yes, Lynn?
Yeah, so I, I've been, it's a little hard for me to talk about this sometimes because I really want to focus on the zoning, because that's the, that's what we need to be talking about here. Affordable housing is my thing. That's what I do in my day, day-to-day. So I want to think about it in terms of that. I, I, I struggle when people's, when you, Nikki, you say it, it, that it's more appropriate outside of town because there's more space. I think we have that, that's often the argument, that let's move affordable housing out of town. There's, there always seems to be a reason not to do it. And in fact, I remember somebody saying to me that, here I said I wasn't going to talk about this, but I'm doing it anyway, somebody saying to me last year, it seems like affordable housing is a great thing, like people seem to be on board with it. What's, where's the pushback? And I said, every time, every single time we talk about affordable housing, there's a pushback, regardless of the neighborhood. And, and I understand that anytime there's a change, there's, in a neighborhood, there's going to be a change in your neighborhood. Anytime there are new houses built, there's going to be a change. I think you could argue that there may be some positive impacts of this, of this development on Thirty-sixth Street as well. We're focusing in on a lot of the negatives. There may be some positive impacts. These are going to be beautiful homes. They will increase, I think, the value of properties around them. And so I think when I think about zoning, getting back to the zoning, I mentioned this last week, you could go either way. You could go, you could look north-south, you could look east-west, I think. I think it's, there's a legitimate argument either way. I land on when I look at the map and I see the, the, the future land use and what the master plan looks like, this, it just seems to fall in line with, with the, with the larger density zoning of R five and R three. So I would, that's where I land on this in regards to the, to the zoning decision we have to make.
Thank you, Lynn.
Here's what I know. I know that we've been talking about housing. I didn't really like the term affordable housing, because I don't really know who's going to live in these homes and what their capacities are going to be, but we have a housing problem in the region. And I think there's a fair amount of housing being built that we just don't talk about, but in Holland Township and Park Township, there are some things going on to where the pressure is, is taking, is being relieved a little bit on people actually needing a place to live and affordable, buying an affordable home. What I know for sure is if this development were to come to fruition as it's being drawn up, we'll have forty-two new housing units. Well done. I don't think we could ask for better partners in, in this affair. I don't, I don't, I have no problem with that. I know that. What I don't know is what will be the impact on those folks who live on Thirty-sixth Street. We're going to vote on something later in the agenda having to do with short-term rentals. That was a debate that took forever. And we were, some of us were convinced that the police, we're going to have to double the size of the police department because there's going to be so many parties going on in downtown Holland, we cannot simply have these things. And tonight, we're going to, we're going to make it more of a permanent thing, because you know what? Nothing happened. Not one thing. So we have a tendency to worry about the worst thing that could happen instead of what's the art of the possible with the best thing. So I, I am not, you know, I am not unsympathetic to what, what this is going to do to Thirty-sixth Street. I can only hope that I'll probably still be in this seat, just because of my term will still be in force, when this thing starts to unfold. And I'll be the first one, if this really is have a negative impact that, that would appear as though, as, has a potential of happening, then I'll be the first one to say, wait a minute, we got to do something. What are we going to do here? There are things we can do, but we don't know what we got to do yet. So I think Lynn's comments about, there's always pushback with affordable housing. There is. There's, and in affordable housing, lose the stigma around affordable housing, and I think that's part of our problem. I think it's a, when you look at all, everything we've learned about, well, where's the best place to develop? Well, you want it near a corridor, you want it near schools, you want it near a grocery store, you want it on a traffic route. I mean, on paper, you can't find a better place to put this where we're talking about doing it right now. You can't find a better place. So I do support this. I support the people behind it. I support the work that the city's done to try and make it happen. I think it's a, it will never be, nothing's ever perfect, but I will be here as this thing unfolds, and if do, if bad things do happen, or it does look like there's just an inordinate amount of unjust things that are happening here, we'll find something. We'll figure it out. Somehow, we'll just have to make it happen. But I've always voted in thinking about what I know might happen and not worry, just, just be confident that the bad things might not be as bad as they are, and there's always that possibility that some of these kids that might be walking down Thirty-sixth Street become part of the real neighborhood. There's always a possibility that this thing could be in ten years, we'll think it's the greatest thing we ever did. We just don't know. But if we never do anything, we're not going to do, we're not going to get there, so. I do appreciate all the arguments. I don't know about the traffic thing. Mike, I, I agree with you. Intuitively, it seems like obviously there's going to be more cars going up and down Thirty-sixth Street. What does that mean? What does it look like? How's it going to unfold? I don't know. But I do think the pros of what we're talking about, at least in my mind at this juncture, outweigh the negative that I think will fall a little bit on some folks on Thirty-sixth Street, but I'm not convinced that it's going to be as gloom as doom as perhaps it can, if we're talking about, so. I'll support it.
Thank you, Jay. Other comments? Quincy?
Lynn, I, I appreciate your comments that you made. I agree with them as well. Couple of things I wanted to talk about. We had... We had during our planning session last year, two of our goals, and Mike spoke to that a little bit, was to increase the tax base, and that's what this does. The other was to impact affordable housing, and also that's what that does. So those are, those are attainable goals that are currently in our reach right now that we can have an impact on. The traffic thing that has been spoken about, yeah, at times, traffic can be heavy on, on that street. But also there's times where that traffic can be almost nonexistent. I guess looking at it, when just sitting here thinking about heavy traffic, that's an extra 30 seconds in reality. I've never sat anywhere on that street and had to wait for over a minute to make a left turn, being on the, on the east side. I'm sorry, on the west, sorry, Mike. On the west side. So I, I understand that argument, but to impact lives in a positive way with doing this and giving up 30 seconds of time that you have to pull out of there, to me, it doesn't, doesn't even register on the scale. One thing that hasn't been talked about, maybe we talked about it earlier on, but, and this may be a question for Habitat and Jubilee, but what worries me out of this is when people do move in, they have a stigma around them. And how will the community, the established community, accept them into their actual community? I don't know if you guys have done anything to look at that, to address that, to have those open communications, even in a sense, I guess, educating people in the community on what your goals are and what your mission statement consists of, even to the point of meeting some of your board members. I don't know if you guys have done that, but I think, in, in my point of view, that would go a long ways. And I want to share some of my experience with, with this whole situation from a different perspective that I'm, I'm sure most of you cannot speak to. So I live in a Habitat house. We have been there for approximately 11 years. I'm really good friends with the people who used to live next to me. They just moved about a year and a half ago. We still communicate. We're friends. We're friends now. We were over their house a couple of weekends ago, sitting outside, just hanging out, having a good time. We text frequently and we talk frequently. But, and here's the but, this was a vacant lot in the city that he had dreams for. He had aspirations of what he wanted to do with this lot. He didn't own it, but he wanted to do some stuff with this lot. Fast forward a little bit, he was very, very unhappy that there was a house being built right next to his. And I live in the city. I'm over by the aquatic center, and the lots are small. We don't have, I could open my window. There's been times where our kitchens are, our kitchen windows are butted up against each other, driveway in between, where I'll snap a picture of him and send it to him. And he'll do the same to me. So, and that just shows what kind of a relationship we have. But again, before that, he wanted nothing to do with the house that was going up next to him. He wanted nothing to do with the family that was going to be in that house next to him. And he has grown so fond of my children and of my family in general. Every Christmas, they bring us freshly baked monkey bread, Christmas morning. I look forward to it. But that was not his mindset before all of this happened. And I look at my children and they are growing up. My younger ones are in elementary school. And, well, actually, one's in elementary, one's going to middle school, and another's in middle school. But they had the opportunity, living in that neighborhood of community. We talk about impacting lives. We talk about impacting the next generation for good. And what better way to do that than have community? What better way to, like I said, my neighbor, there was times and conversations that I don't even know about, that I find out about down the road that they had, that they had with my kids that impacted them. And that's, that's what it's about. It's about each other. It's about helping. And for me to have the opportunity to be a part of this, it's a big deal to me. It's a really big deal. Because there were people who have impacted my life by a decision that they made, just a decision. And it has impacted my life in profound ways. So my hope is that the decision that I make will have a profound, positive profound impact on someone's life, be it a family, be it an individual, and even the existing neighborhood. Because there are times where we do look at things in a negative light and discount all the positive things that could actually come out of it.
Thank you, Quincy. Other comments?
I have to, I have to speak again.
Sure, go ahead.
If I may. And I'm feeling, Lynn, from your comments, and Quincy, I don't, it's not the affordable aspect of it. And I, I actually don't think there will be a stigma. I, I, this is a planning commission thing. I would have, I didn't, and I don't know what the developers asked. I'm used to having a, you know, you, you go back and forth. You ask for 50, you get this much. And so it's 42. I would have felt better with 30. I don't care who the people are, and I have no doubt that the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhoods will welcome the new people, because that's just what happens. People are people. And they'll like them because they're people. If they're, you know, you just, that's what happens. And every, but in every development I've ever worked on, the, and it doesn't matter what kind, and I agree with you, Jay, affordable is just a, an incomplete and a term that doesn't really describe. So it's, the, the numbers create the other issues, the traffic, the whatever we're talking about, the ingress and egress safety issues. And it's not the, who, who do we consider by, who are the buyers of affordable housing? So I, I just want to make, be clear of that. It just, that sat wrong. And I know you don't intend it that way, but it just kind of sat wrong with me.
No, I appreciate the clarification. That's nice. Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Mr. Hookstra.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, if you've been paying attention, you will be able to agree with me that I'm in the presence of people with very big brains and very deep levels of perception. I thought when Brother Mike started talking, I, I thought to myself, well, I'm not going to have to say a word because he's nailed to this thing. And then there was a one little point, maybe where we would diverge from concurrent positions.
Sorry.
No problem. I've come to expect it. This is obviously not an easy issue to address. It never has been since we first started talking about it, primarily because, as Nikki alluded to, this is not a development that's being developed from a clean slate out in the middle of a field somewhere, probably similar to what York Avenue and Mill Bridge and Pioneer Avenue were before they were built. As I think I recall, it used to be an area of orchards and pastures, probably. So the only people who are, only ones being upset were maybe some farmers and some cows. But this is situated in the middle of existing development. And so there are some things that are less than ideal. And if I had my druthers, I would rather have more avenues for, literally, I guess, egress and ingress. There would be nice to have more than one road to, to get to these places. But, you know, that's what it is. When we're looking at spots within the city, there aren't that many, as we've alluded to, available for, for development. And we do have, as one of our goals and priorities, making available areas for development for additional housing. So, you know, I acknowledge all of the pitfalls of this and the less desirable aspects, and sure wish it could be different than it is, but it is what it is. And I guess that my, the things that I think about in regard to this rezoning request that we have before is that we rely an awful lot on the boards and commissions and the staff that we have employed for the city. I'm not a traffic engineer. I wouldn't know how to go about that. I'd just sit there and watch, count cars, I guess, and see how long it took me to get out on a road. So I, I have to invest a certain amount of confidence in those who do know about that to give me information, to make an informed decision. By the same token, I'm, you know, I don't know that much about stormwater retention and, and management, but we employ people who do know about that. And I guess it would be nice to know ahead of time what that's all going to look like, but the process that we employ puts that at a different point. And I have to take the word of those people who know about that stuff when they tell me that they're going to look at that and they're going to make informed decisions. Because it's in nobody's best interest to do stupid stuff, especially when it comes to rainwater and sewage and, you know, all that stuff, you know, what happens with that, when that goes awry. So the long and the short of it is, I recall decisions that we've made in the past when it's come to certain developments. Not a lot of decisions, but a few, I think, where we made mistakes. Where we had information from staff and from policies that we had that sort of informed us about a direction that we should take, and we diverged from that with the interest of serving the public. And in retrospect, I'm not sure in some of those instances, we actually did serve the public correctly in terms of a long-term view. So I'm thinking about that, too. So I, I concur with all the stuff my colleagues have said. They've said it so well, and I'm glad they did. And a lot of this stuff, you know, push come to shove, it's kind of a crapshoot because you don't know exactly what's going to happen. But I think rezoning this, approving the request, will go farther to serve what we've deemed as necessary aspirations and goals rather than creating a detrimental situation. And we could be wrong. You know, we're flawed people, too. We don't have crystal balls. We do the best we can with what we got. So I'm inclined to go along with this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Dave. Any other comments, discussion from council? There are advantages and disadvantages, I think, to speaking last. I, I echo everything that I have heard around this, this dais. There's a reason why there are nine of us up here. There are nine different perspectives, nine different viewpoints, nine different thought processes. And I found myself, as I was listening to each and every one of you agreeing to, to many parts of what it was that, that all of you had to say. And it, it may be tried, it may be said often, but reasonable people can certainly disagree, especially when it comes to an issue like this. What this comes down to for me is we, we set a goal and we made a commitment to affordable housing in the community, and affordable meaning 80% of area median income or less. And we're not looking at this as an affordable housing issue today. We're looking at this as a rezoning issue today. Does this type of zoning fit in this area? And Lynn Raymond said very eloquently, this is, you can look north or south, or you can look east or west, and you can look at it different ways. And when I look at, when I look at that and then throw in the context of what could be otherwise in this site, potentially more medical offices? Is that going to make this a better neighborhood or a lesser neighborhood? What are the other types of things that could be done in here? Is it a perfect site? No, it's not. I have the same concerns, Mike, that you do in regard to 36th Street and in regard, in regard to traffic counts that are in and out of there. Am I, am I a traffic study expert? I'm not. I like, I try to rely on those, those experts as well. And, but what I do know is that we do have an opportunity, as Raoul said, we've got this, there are lots of different developments out there. This is one we have. We have an opportunity to have an impact directly on this. I was not part of this board when the, the RFP went out and said, with, one of the things that we're looking for here is affordable housing in this site. And we, and you're right, Jay, and you're right, Quincy, we could not ask for better partners here. We couldn't. This is not just affordable housing. This is quality affordable housing. As I heard in one of the statements, it's, the, one of the goals here is to remake the idea of what affordable housing can be in this neighborhood. And, and Quincy, I knew that you were a Habitat homeowner. And when you talked to, and when you asked, I, I think you were, you were not asking for a direct answer because I think you knew the answer to the question already. Does, does Habitat reach out to the people that are in the, in the neighborhoods? Does Habitat talk to the people that are, that are going to be there? Do the Habitat board members go out there? They certainly do. And if we, and if we read the, the comments that were there, we, there was a wonderful letter that was sent to this council by someone who lives next to a Habitat home that is under construction. And they could not be happier with the process and with the neighbors and with the construction process that's there. And this isn't just simply affordable housing. This is affordable housing with homeownership. As I think probably most of the people know here, 20 years ago, I was on the board of both Habitat for Humanity and Jubilee Ministries. And then I, I got involved in some other things, and I wasn't, wasn't directly involved with Habitat for, or Jubilee for quite a long time. And I actually had, about a year ago, I sat down and had lunch with the, the director of Habitat and said, hey, how's it going with, I know where we were 20 years ago. Whatever happened to all of those homeowners that I knew 20 years ago? And he said something that really surprised me. He said, they still live in the homes. They, they are, they're not transient homeowners. They're not people that are coming in and moving out. They are people that have become invested in their neighborhoods. They've built communities. We have an opportunity, Quincy, as you said, to make a big impact on the lives of people who will have the ability to be able to live in these homes. It provides stability for families. People get better jobs. Their kids get better grades in school. One of the things that I learned at Habitat is that very often a Habitat homeowner, within a very small number of years of living in that Habitat home, probably would no longer qualify financially to be a Habitat homeowner because they got a better job than they had before. And we used to have people say to us, isn't that a problem for you that these people that are living in the Habitat homes now have good jobs and are doing really well? And we said, no, that is exactly what we are, what we were looking for. We have an opportunity. We have the ability to have a direct impact. No, it's not a perfect plan. But when I look at this neighborhood and zoning this particular site and changing that from an R1 to a PUD that can put a great neighborhood in what is already a great neighborhood, and when I think about Mr. Trethuie, is what you said, is we represent the entire community of Holland. Every single person in this Holland, in this community. We owe it to the people of this community to live up to our goals, to live up to our priorities, and to do what we set out to do at the very beginning of this process. I think based on what I've said, you, you all know where I'm going to. I think based on what I've said, you, you all know where I'm going to fall on this. I think we have a real opportunity here. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Tethui?
No.
Arnshorst?
No.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item, and actually, unless someone on council wants to handle this differently, I would like to do the public hearing on the next two items. The proposed amendment to Section thirty-nine, two-hundred of the zoning ordinance to continue short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. And Item ten D, Community and Neighborhood Services Propose Text Amendments to Chapter fourteen of the city code to continue non-owner occupied short-term rentals, just as one public hearing that we're, one public hearing that we do. And we can do that as one vote, or we can do that, actually, we talked about that, where I think we're going to do that as two separate votes. But we'll do one public hearing on it and we'll do, Tricia, I think you, well, well, I'm going to send it over to Mr. Van Beek and see what you would like to do in regard to the comment on this and staff report.
Yes, we're very happy to deal with this in one foul swoop, if you'd like. We've had some conversations. This is probably the best example of something that has been much discussed, I think, as well understood. This would be the final step in the process of our recommendation to make some minor changes in the zoning ordinance that would basically put, take the pilot, short-term rental ordinance that has been, been in place, that we've monitored, that we've reported back to you. And when I say we, I say that the royal we, because really Tricia's been the one that's done all the work. And this would then just put this into code, take exactly that pilot project and put it into code that, that would live moving forward. We are happy to go through anything and answer any questions that council or the mayor may have. But this would be also a public hearing, so just a reminder, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, that reminder. And actually, why don't we take care of the public hearing portion of this first? I will now open the public hearing on these two items. Item, I want to make sure I get this right, ten C and ten D, in regard to modifying the city, city code to continue non-owner occupied short-term rentals. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak in regard to either one of these items? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council and Roel, for your benefit, I apologize for just saying questions to staff. I want to, this is going to be a universal thing I'm going to, I'm going to say to council. Whenever I say that, if you have a question for the applicant, please ask the question to the applicant as well. Any questions or comments for staff? And I don't believe we have an applicant here for this one, so any questions council has? Otherwise, what is the pleasure of council?
Moved by, moved by Peters.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra. Any discussion? Yes. Mr., Mr. Tethui?
Last time, I'll start out this time. Mr. Peters asked a very important question. And I think one of the reasons this council works so well is because we ask these questions and we do things that some people think take a little bit of time. You asked, you said the sky was going to fall and you and I have got a history of being on opposite ends, parking, I think, was one of those things and, and things like that.
Long list.
Yeah. Very long list. So Jay and I have known each other for a long time. Anyway, I think I said this before and I'm going to say it again. One of the reasons, and yes, I was very, very concerned, I was one of those concerned people that Jay talked about, that this was going to be rampant, there was going to be issues. But I think one of the reasons why it didn't is because of our approach. We took a conservative approach to it. We looked at what other communities had done and took a compromised position and said, okay, we're going to try this, see what happens. You're absolutely right. It, it turned out, and I'm, I'm happy to say, it turned out good. Only time you're ever going to hear me say that. So I, I think it was our process. And Tricia, thank you very much for helping us through that process, but people kept their wits about them. We had rules and regulations. Those rules and regulations aren't changing. We're just simply changing a name from pilot to permanent. So our conservative approach is still going to go there. We're going to continue to watch it. If we have issues, we'll back off. But I'm not going to say I was wrong. I was partially right. But I'm, and I'm glad that it turned out the way it did and, and the approach that we did, so. Jay, I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Tethui. Other comments? Yes, Mr. Hookstra?
Just a little small caveat, Brother Mike, I would probably prefer the terms reasonable approach rather than conservative approach.
No, I stick by what I said.
Yeah, I figured. I still love you, man.
Any other comments? All right, Kathy, would you please call the roll? Oh, we need a motion yet, don't we?
We need a motion and we're doing this too soon. You have a motion.
Oh, we do. We have a motion. We're doing the motion. We have a motion on the first one.
There you go.
We have a motion on the first one, so Kathy, you are calling the roll and this vote is in regard to Item ten C, Planning Commission Proposed Amendment to Section thirty-nine, two-hundred of the zoning ordinance to continue short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. Tethui.
Tethui?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now I would entertain a motion in regard to Item ten B, Community and Neighborhood Services Propose Text Amendments to Chapter fourteen of the city code to continue non-owner occupied short-term rentals.
So moved?
Moved by Hookstra. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Garcia. Any discussion?
Just one quick question.
Certainly.
For staff, this is just basically housekeeping stuff, right? Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Tethui, would you like to comment on how you were right on this one as well?
No.
No, all right. Would you please call the roll, please, Kathy?
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Tethui?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item, Item ten E, Emergency Ordinance, No Wake Zone on Lake Makatawa. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council. Couple of things, just reminder on context and process here. You took action on this a month ago, let's say, and the process there required City of Holland, Holland Township and Park Township. From a staff level perspective, we worked together as those three communities to recommend one set of changes that we'd send to the DNR. That worked most of the way. There was one additional set of changes that was asked for by Park Township. Regardless, that went to the DNR. The DNR then, as outlined in the process of a new piece of legislation that was approved earlier yet this calendar year, so it's still very recent and active, then allowed the DNR to take a look at those requests, do their own investigation, and then come back with an ordinance that then goes to the three entities, tonight, that's us, to basically do an up or down vote. We made the request to make the portion known as the Narrows, no wake for all vessels, and we asked for two-hundred-foot no wake from shore, pier, docks. The DNR actually came back and agreed, except for they, they actually expanded the two-hundred-foot no wake from shore, pier, docks to three-hundred feet. So that is what is before you tonight. Again, it's basically a up and down, up or down vote. A few additional things. Park Township had a special meeting last week, the day after we received the information from the DNR, and they did pass the ordinance from the DNR separately, just so you know and are aware. They did additionally take action where they asked for an appeal to do an additional control order, basically way into Makatawa Bay, near the channel. That is not connected to this action and our understanding from the DNR, that appeal does not slow down, delay, or have really anything to do with the action that you would take tonight. Holland Township has a special meeting scheduled for tomorrow to consider this exact same issue. We, as outlined in the ordinance, are recommending that this be an emergency ordinance. We think that the situation surrounding this and the amount of time that we've taken, it's been well-publicized. We're in the middle of voting season and quite frankly, even entering into the Fourth of July busy weekend. We think this definitely meets the criteria that would be an emergency ordinance, which, should you take action on this, would take immediate effect. The last thing that I'll just let you know, there are some requirements, if you would, of DNR that they ask of the local units. So just so that you're aware of the actions that we have ready to go, depending on the action that, that council takes tonight, by way of communications, we actually have a video that we had planned and are ready to release tomorrow, that quite frankly, isn't directly related to this action. It's a video we did in coordination with Ottawa County, the Marine Patrol Unit, and it gives just really good information, like our video crew always does, they're really top-notch. And it just talks about no wake and enforcement and those types of things from Ottawa County perspective. We are also very prepared that we will do, using our typical other media sources, Facebook, Twitter, the like, that we would notify the public of this change, should you vote to approve it tonight. We also have signs ready to go, that tomorrow morning, we would post signs at our public boat launch at Collin Park, that would highlight this map in particular, that I think as good as possible educates the public on what the new ordinance would be. And we also have purchased additional buoys that we are planning to put out through a contractor to denote, if you would, the Narrows are already denoted, but showing kind of the three-hundred-foot boundary as you proceed from the Narrows east towards the city. There's probably never going to be enough buoys out there that some people would probably want us to have, but I think the number is six that we've purchased. I'm not going to promise that those are going to go out tomorrow or even the day after that, but we will get those buoys out there, again, all dependent on your action tonight. So I think it'd be, I thought it'd be helpful to kind of give a background for all of that because this has been kind of an on-again, off-again situation, and I know that the public is very interested in this. So that is an update on context, process, and then certainly a recommendation from staff that you would approve this emergency ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Motion approved, ten E, emergency orders, no wake zone on Lake Makatawa.
Thank you for that. I do, I do believe we need to do, do we need to do a public hearing on this as well?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so let's, let's do that first. Open a public hearing in regard to this emergency no-wake ordinance? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak in regard to this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Motion still stands.
All right. All right, moved by Corbin, is there support? Support by Tethui. Any discussion?
Yes, fire away. Nice job, Scott. Two questions. First of all, if for some outside chance Park Township is afforded your appeal, does this, does that have to come back to all three bodies then again, or are we done?
No, I'm glad you asked that question, Mike. No, I do not believe that would come back to all three bodies. And I will let you know that specifically what they appealed is something that was part of the original plan that all three communities recommended and that you took action on. It was basically, if you take a look at Makatawa Bay in front of you, they asked for basically to expand that section, and I'm somewhat to the east. So what, my understanding is what they're appealing is something that was part of the original act, kind of the recommendation that we sent to, that is the only thing that, that they've appealed.
I thought they had.
They had other actions that they, and, and remember, there were two actions, just like we're taking two actions. They took two actions, too. The first time, they, they sent something to the DNR that had multiple things attached to it. The second time, the only, so when they took the action that you're taking tonight, they approved exactly what you're taking action on and then, but then the only thing they appealed, they didn't appeal multiple things, they only appealed one section that was part of what we originally sent to the DNR. I can, I can try more. There were other things with Pine Creek Bay and they wanted no wake everywhere. They're not appealing those things. They're only appealing the one section of a slight expansion of no wake by Makatawa Bay. And my understanding, most succinctly, Mike, is no, there's nothing in that appeal process that would come back to us because it's totally outside of our waters.
Okay. I've got one side question.
Yes, Nikki? This resolution expires in six months, which would be January something, and the high water's probably still going to be there next year. Will we do this a little sooner, propose this kind of a resolution or for next year? Because the same situation's going to be there. And not, and we wouldn't have to wait till the July fourth to institute emergency measures.
Yep. So obvious, we were not able to do this any earlier this year because it's brand-new legislation.
Right.
The legislation allows for a second term to basically do this by vote of council, so we won't have to go through the process of sending it to the DNR, waiting for them to come back. So we would be able, I'm not going to presume anything, but we would be able, as the three communities, to ask for these exact temporary local water controls for one more year. And then beyond that, we've, at a staff level, had the discussion that there is the ability that the DNR has looked at that would allow for basically two sets of standards to permanently be in place. One for what I'm going to call high water and one for normal water and low water, which begs the question, well, how do you determine that? And basically, you determine that by you, you set one water level, and anything at or above is high water, anything below is low water. So I don't want to presume what we would recommend or what you would act on, but the thought is that we can do this for one year, let's call it a pilot. We can maybe even do it for a second year, whether that be conservative or reasonable. And then the third year, then we can come back and then we would be able to maybe do something in a more permanent nature. Sorry for the humor, but hey, we've been here for a while.
I think I have it. And the other part of this is enforcement, and I have had reports that the Marine Patrol is more, has a more visible presence this year, whether they do or not, or people are more aware. It seems to be already without, you know, any anticipation of the emergency measures. They seem to be out there on the water more, so good for them.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion, we have support. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Tethui?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item, City Manager, twelve E, three-point-one, Parks and Recreation, award bid for construction of dog park. Award bid for construction of dog park.
Motion to adopt recommendation.
He moved too quickly on that, didn't he, Mr. Corbin? Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, so this would be normally something that we probably could have said, hey, let's just put this on consent agenda. But there was just an itch that we felt that maybe this would be something that Council would appreciate. An update, and we think also, this is a major milestone in something that really delivers something to the larger community. So we thought that it warranted Mr. Van Dyken to report on all the hard work that he and other staff and others have been doing. So, sorry for not doing the clicker very well tonight, Matt.
It's okay, it's been a long night already.
All right.
Good evening, thank you for having me. So I just wanted to start out with a slide that reminds you of the dog park at Veneralte. It's been a little while since we've gone through this. As you know, that is Dutch. Dutch is a real dog, he's my dog. And I'm going to start the slideshow by showing you a photograph of the happiest little girl in the world, the cutest puppy in the world, and the most giant lab I've ever seen in my life. Dutch is one years old, and he is 94 pounds, and is very happy and excited to be able to play in the dog park with all his brothers and sisters. So as you know, we have gone through the process of the dog park at Veneralte Farm. The fiscal year 20 budget included $125,000 to build the dog park portion of that. Andy Kenyon and I came to you all in the study session, and you said, hey, wait, guys, that's great, but what if we do this really the right way? Actually build a building that has restroom facilities, that has a dog wash facility that's heated, so that not only can this be used for the dog wash, but it can also be used for the kiddos when they sled at Veneralte Farm in the wintertime. So we did that. We've come back and talked to you a little bit about that in the past. This is the dog park layout. It's got the northern area there that is for the larger dogs, and the southern area that's for small dogs, and there's smaller fencing so the little dogs can't run through it. But we've gone through that entire process, worked with the GMB, visited the Ottawa County Dog Park, just done all the research we thought we could do to bring back the best option to you. We've created the construction documents and we went out to bid. As you remember, we actually went through the Historic District Commission too, bought some comments from them about what that restroom facility could look like so that it also blends in with historic values at Veneralte Farm. So we went to bid, we've received those bids back, we received six bids. Those bids ranged from a high of $710,000 to the recommended bid of $462,797. So the recommendation before you is to approve that amount in T2 construction. You also hopefully remember that this amount is much more than the $125,000 that was originally budgeted. We had a significant savings in the construction of the City Manager and Mayor's Office Suite. The furniture and that construction came back significantly under. We've had a number of other items in the capital improvement budget that came in under what they were budgeted. So we're very confident that that MCFIF budget can handle this amount for the dog park at Veneralte Farm, and we would hope to have construction completed this fall in its entirety.
Great. Is there a motion? Moved by Trethuie, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond. Any discussion, questions? Thank you all for having that pregnant pause there. That was very nice for, well done. Any questions, comments?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Trethuie.
Matt, I've given you a hard time about this, bugged you about it, you've stepped up to the plate. You and Andy have gone above and beyond. This has gone through three city managers now, finally got one that semi-agreed with us. But it was because of your push that got this done. I will be eternally grateful. Thank you very much, and I hope we have a groundbreaking soon.
We will, and I'm going to push that right back to you, Mr. Trethuie. This is because of your pushing that we're able to get this done, but thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, so this stays open in the winter, you're saying? So, and, I mean, the city maintains it and cleans it, and that's pretty impressive.
Yeah, it's built, it's built so the interior portions, the bathroom, the dog wash portions, will be very, very sturdy, to say the least.
Dogs like Dutch.
Great. Other comments, questions? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trethuie?
Yes.
Aronors?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item, 12E 6.1 Gifts. Kathy, would you please read the gifts for us?
The City Manager's Office is pleased to report the following gifts. Parks and Recreation Sal Perez Scholarship Program. Employee donations, $169. Anonymous donors, $57. Human Relations Department Future Links Chuck and Sue Demick, $500. Public Safety Department Victim Services Program Cunningham Dahman, $80. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Motion to accept with appreciation.
Moved by Trethuie, is there support?
Support.
Support by Bird, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Communications by the City Manager.
All right, I'm going to make this quick, but I do have a few things that I think are worthy of highlighting. First, my apologies, I know there was some confusion tonight about the 5:30 pre-council. I think that's just the nature of what you do sometimes when you use forms and you drag them down. But again, my apologies for that. Couple state budget things that are going to lead into a, to, it's kind of the good news and the bad news, I guess is the way I'm going to try to describe this quickly, and then I'll try to include more detailed information in my report tomorrow that I send out. And on that note, remember, City Hall is closed on Friday, so that's why the report will go out tomorrow. State budget, you may hear some news there, and I think the governor signed it today, but yesterday there was an agreement between the Senate, the House, and the governor on state budget. In particular, it took a look at using some of the Federal Cares Act money to address some of the issues in the current year budget. Three things that we're specifically following as it relates to us. One, there's a revenue sharing budget, and you're going to see them talk about that being the August revenue sharing budget. I will highlight that for us in our accounting standards, Gatsby accounting standards and others. We actually recognize that as a payment in FY '20. So even though we receive it later, it's like a lot of things that we, we're going to get bills and different things, as Tim said last week, probably for a month, month and a half, that we still recognize and receive in FY '20. The entire amount of that statutory revenue sharing is being eliminated from the state budget. But wait, it's being refilled with federal act money, and it's actually being refilled at 150% of the removal. Okay, so that's good news. Now, don't get too carried away because that's only one of several revenue sharing payments that we get, and that's good news for fiscal year '20. I'm going to tell you, though, that we still continue to have all of the concerns that we have, where fiscal year '20 is not where, kind of that short-term, that's the message we've been giving you. Short-term, I think we're going to be okay. It's as this plays out over time, and definitely, we still share with municipalities across the state, the Michigan Municipal League and others, at some point, that money's not going to continue to be there. So still carry that concern for the future. There's a first responder reimbursement, kind of frontline hazard pay, that we're going to continue to closely follow and investigate. There's basically no detailed information yet out on that. But it seems to be something that, again, we're following very closely so that if that's something that our first responders qualify for, particularly with federal Cares Act money, which is where that has, that pot's been seeded right now, that's definitely something that we pursue. There also is an unanticipated that we're closely following that basically, the way we understand it, is it would pay our entire payroll for two months during the middle of the COVID that we had. So that could, quite frankly, that'd be a larger dollar amount and positive impact on us than even the revenue sharing payment, that one payment at 150%. There's also a municipal water bill forgiveness. So the BPW continues to have that bill forgiveness program in place, and that is also eligible for some reimbursement. But again, like all of these things, short on detail, long on the promise. That's the good news. There's also the bad news. Like I said, that's for FY '20, which we technically closed yesterday. Today is the first day of FY '21. This is the year where we would expect, from a budget perspective, where, okay, we need to be more concerned. So we're going to continue to follow this. We're on day one of 365. I promise you, we will be following this closely and will come back to you on a regular basis when there's something of substance that we need to report. MERS, the Michigan Employment Retirement System. We've been telling you that we expect that with some of the assumption changes that they're doing, that we are expecting that our funding status and then the resulting increased payments that we're going to need to make would come. And we received that report two days ago. And we, unfortunately, sometimes you don't like to be right, we were right. Our funding status dropped from 94% to 88%. We expected this. I could go into explaining it all, I'll be happy to individually or in another session to explain that, but this is what we expected. It's not because we did anything, you did anything wrong. It's two primary assumption changes that happened. Now, Tim also talked to you about that we wanted, we've been recommending to try to get ahead of this, not only to kind of program it in our budgets, because we know that our annual retired required contribution, or the ARC, is going to go up, and we're going to have to kind of build the discipline and build that into our budget in future years, but that we also wanted to make additional payments above and beyond. We just made one of those payments, but you may ask, well, how is that reflected in these numbers? It's not, because these numbers are for calendar year that ended December 31. So that additional payment that we made is not reflected in these. But don't get too excited that, I think it was 800,000, would only be 10% of the liability that went up. We're looking at about an $8 million increase in our unfunded liability that brings us from that 94% to 88%. So sorry. Good news, bad news. This is going to be that hurdle that we're going to have to address. But I will continue to say, we've been planning for this. You guys have been very supportive in saying, hey, let's not just wait till it hits us. Let's try to get out in ahead of it. But yes, this is the news that we are expecting to come. And then finally, also related more to the state budget, I think many of you, all of you in the community, was sharing in our excitement about the West Michigan Express, which was that pilot again of a bus rapid transit system basically between Grand Rapids and Holland, and how well the city is set up to receive that because of the integration with the Padno Center where Max runs its operations. Unfortunately, again, not a surprise here, there was funding that was basically almost ready to go and lined up that we were going to get from the state budget. And pretty much, we just know that that, the chances of that surviving in this state budget that they're going to start working on is probably slim to none, emphasis on none. So the plan is, the group that's working on that, and we have representatives from the city that are on that task force, we're not giving up, we're going to continue to do the work. It might be, we might have to do some of the other work and put some of the, some of the rest of it on hold. But the idea's not going away, it just might have to be delayed another year when we are hoping maybe even to have it going later this fall. And that's enough. I'll communicate other things in my written communication to you tomorrow. Happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a video this week?
We can show that now, that'd be great.
I was assuming this was the portion of the meeting, but...
That, I always forget. We, while Matt queues that up, we did hear that there were some requests to have some education about fireworks. So Captain Bob Burisma, before you right now.
Hello, I'm Captain Burisma with the Holland Department of Public Safety. The City of Holland follows the Michigan State law, which allows for the discharge of consumer-grade fireworks around the national holidays. What are consumer-grade fireworks? Basically, any firework which can be purchased by the public, which either shoots up in the air or has an explosion. With the Fourth of July celebrations coming up, we want to remind you to be respectful of your neighbors and to make you aware of what the law allows. According to state law, you are permitted to use consumer-grade fireworks between 11:00 AM and 11:45 PM each day on June 29 and 30, as well as July 1, 2, 3, and of course, the 4th. If you use these fireworks outside of this time, you can be cited. And according to state law, the court shall impose a $1,000 fine for this violation. A couple other items to be aware of. You can only discharge these fireworks off your own property or the property of someone else with their permission. State law prohibits using consumer-grade fireworks on public property, streets, street right-of-way, or private property, including school and church property, without the express permission of the owner. Again, anyone who does so can be cited. And don't light off fireworks if you've been drinking. Doing so while under the influence of intoxicants is a misdemeanor, and it carries a maximum penalty of up to one year in jail. And this one includes the lighting of low-impact fireworks, meaning the type that emits showers and sparks. Just make sure you have someone who's not been drinking in charge of lighting them off. This holiday season, let's make it a safe one, and let's all follow the law on fireworks use. If you do need to report fireworks use outside of the times they are allowed, please contact the Ottawa County Central Dispatch, their non-emergency number, 1-800-249-0911.
Thanks for the reminder, Mr. Mayor, and again, a shout-out to our video crew and Captain Burisma for a very well-laid-out informative video.
Well done, thank you. And well done by Captain Burisma. Next item is appointments and communications from the mayor. I'm going to do the communications quickly first because it piggybacks on that video message from Captain Burisma and also on the new no-wake zone ordinance. We can pass laws, we can try to enforce laws, but really, the most important component in my mind for both fireworks and no-wake zone is the public doing their best to comply and to be courteous with their neighbors. We know in regard to fireworks, there are lots of folks, including myself, that has animals, pets, that do not like fireworks at all. If you can try to keep the roar down as much as you possibly can. We also have lots of veterans who do not like the sound of fireworks. Please be mindful of them. And then also in regard to the no-wake zone, please remember that the water levels are very high. There are both private and public property owners around the lake. And if you are a resident of Park Township, Holland Charter Township, or the City of Holland, you are a property owner around the lake. There is public property around that lake that your tax dollars pay to maintain. And if you're on a boat and boating and damage that, it's ultimately just going to cost you money. So please be courteous to your neighbors. Uh, so please be courteous to your neighbors and to yourself in regard to no-wake zones. In regard to, uh, appointments and reappointments and resignations from boards and commissions, there are a large number of them this evening, and there are actually three reasons for that. Uh, one is, uh, COVID nineteen has slowed that process a bit. Uh, also, a COVID nineteen-related, uh, issue with that was, we were holding off a little bit beforehand on making new appointments and reappointments because we were looking at, uh, revamping our boards, committees, and commission system. Uh, we were, we're not interested in making a lot of appointments and reappointments to boards that we might be shuffling around, but that process was slowed down as well. And we've gotten to the point where our boards and commissions have been saying to us, we really need these vacancies filled so that we can continue to operate well. Uh, and then there were also some, some outstanding openings on those boards and commissions. Uh, it is the, it's the practice to read through the entire list with exactly what it is that they're doing and when the terms are going to be expiring, uh, and what, when their appointment, uh, is starting and ending. And we've decided we're gonna abbreviate that a bit. Uh, and we're gonna name, we're gonna list the name of the person and the board or commission that they are, or committee or commission that they're related to. Um, one thing I wanna make, make clear is, these are all people that are volunteering their time for the city of Holland. They do very valuable work for all of us. Uh, and as I, I was going through the list, I was thinking to myself, wow, we've got a lot of people who are willing to step up and work for us, and I wanna thank each and every one of them for making that commitment, taking the time, and doing that very important work. Uh, and so I'm gonna, I'm going to go through the mayor ones, uh, then, uh, Mr. Tuthui's gonna go through the, the council ones. Uh, so I would ask you to please accept the reappointment, these are reappointments first. Dale Wingarden to the Brownfield Development Authority, Robert Carlson to the Brownfield Development Authority, David Meyer to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Dale Wingarden to the Building Authority, Jim Story to the Civic Center Place Board, Hillary McAlpine to the Civic Center Place Board, Tim Vreeman to the Civic Center Place Board, Michael Schulteis to the Civic Center Place Board, Tim Vreeman to the Compensation Commission, Stefani Nevez-Bestman to the Historic District Commission, Nicholas Rolinski to the Historic District Commission, Kim Thomford-Ike to the Historic District Commission. Uh, I believe there's a typo here, although it might be, this might be the case. Tim Vogli-Vogli to the Holland Satellite Smart, Smart Zone. Uh, I did not realize Tim's middle name was Vogli as well. Catherine Ristola-Bass to the Human Relations Commission, Jane Dahlman to the International Relations Commission, Alyssa Wilson to the International Relations Commission, John DeClouche to the International Relations Commission, Stephen DeYoung to the Neighborhood Improvement Committee, Viola Jackson-Cleveland to the Neighborhood Improvement Committee, Carolyn Marquist to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Dave DeBlock to the Planning Commission, Andrew Blunt to the Planning Commission, John Jobson to the Police Community Relations Commission, Wasana Davis to the Police Community Relations Commission, Susan Van Win, it's Van Weingarten, to the Police Community Relations Commission, and Carolyn Marquist to the Public Art Advisory Council. Those were all reappointments. Uh, and then please accept the following appointments. Jody Ozarsky to the Civic Center Place Board, Steve Farrell to the Civic Center Place Board, Justin Lamberts to the Historic District Commission, Case Vanderlees to the Human Relations Commission, Michael Quayar to the International Relations Commission, Matty Roberts to the Neighborhood Improvement Commission, Jan Skop to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and please accept the rec, the resignations of Grant Hurst from the Civic Center Place Board, Tiara Johnson from the Human Relations Commission, and Michelle Lonergan from the Public Art Advisory Council. I would entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by Tuthui, is there support?
Support.
Support, support by Arnsors, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, I believe, let's do a roll call vote on this, Kathy.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Tuthui?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, uh, and I will pass the baton to Mr. Tuthui.
All right, in like fashion, the a reappointment of August Overway to the Board of Review, Dean Prince to the Board of Review, and Tim Hemingway to the Community Pool Authority. And then the appointments of John Bedard to the Board of Appeals, uh, Candace DeBoer to the Community Pool Authority, Eva Dean Falkert to the Community Pool Authority, Paul Raul to Sustainability Committee, Megan Stumbo to the West Michigan Airport Authority, and the acceptance of a resignation of Andrew Blunt from the Board of Appeals. I would put that in the form of a motion.
Moved by Tuthui, is there support? Support by, was that you, oh, that was Quincy, okay. Support by Byrd, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Tuthui?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, any other communications from council members? Yes, Mr. Tuthui?
Along with the fireworks situation, I don't ever want to hear the state coming to us and saying, we haven't got money for revenue sharing. With all the money that they're getting from the fireworks that are being sold around here, they've got to have coffers that are just overflowing. I, I don't know what they're getting, but I know they're getting a lot. Uh, there is my commentary on that. There is some good news, however, along with the transportation situ, uh, situation is that Max was just awarded a four-point-one-million-dollar grant from the CARES Fund.
Wonderful.
Which we will be, um, we had talked about the uses. Hopefully, some of it was going to go toward the, uh, toward the express. But there will be good use for that money for public transportation. And, uh, we really appreciate that from the CARES program. Max does, and we will put it to good use.
Wonderful, thank you. Yes, Mr. Peters?
Might some of that use be for, um, shelters?
Any other comments, communications from council members? If not, there is just one more motion I would entertain.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Tuthui, and there was support, I believe, by Peters. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you.